Good evening and welcome to this August 26, 2024, meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molnar.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And please stand for the pleasure of allegiance if you're able to. Vice President Jackson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no recognitions this evening, so we will jump right into board member reflections. Are there any reflections from board members today? Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. It's good to be back. So there was a lot of things going on recently and then also this coming up week. APS did the backpack giveaway, which I was honored to be a part of just to come and check it out and see all the K through five families there and all the teachers and the staff and the administration there giving away backpacks. Just the excitement was just overwhelming. You know, walking in towards the zoo, everybody's smiling and happy. It just gave me a sense of excitement for school and, you know, to know that this is going to be a great school year. Also, we had the Pride Festival this weekend. About forty to forty-five thousand people from all over came to our city, Akron, Ohio. Great vendors, just all different types of things, activities for kids. And I had to take a step back and just say, wow, imagine if we did this for all of our events. Kids, whatever the events are that we have here in the city of Akron, imagine if our community came out and supported each other. For our kids to see, you know, this support that we do in the city of Akron, maybe things could be a little different where kids won't always say that there's nothing to do in Akron. What else? Oh, this Sunday coming up is the Akron City Festival, celebrating our future leaders. Sunday, September 1st, starting at 1:00 p.m. The parade will start at Spaghetti Warehouse all the way to Cascade Plaza. Please come out and support our youth. A lot of our students with Akron Public Schools will be in it, cheerleaders, football players, bands, and also our young kids too will be in it. And it's just a good way to showcase our children of Akron. Another thing, Signal Akron, I stopped by one of their booths at the Akron Pride Festival and was noticing that, you know, they have students that are documenters. So you can be seventeen and older and be a documenter. They train you and they pay you for your, your report. So they can go to different meeting, government meetings. There may be a student here at our meeting. They just go to all the different commission and board meetings and you write about it and then you submit it and if they select it, you're paid for it. And I know that we currently have one high school senior who writes. He's a student at Firestone High School. I don't know if he's here or not, but he writes and gets paid for it. So if students are interested in being journalists or just learning more about the community, I would, you know, ask for our students to engage with Signal Akron. Their next orientation is September 7th at Vernon Odom Library. Just, and also it's good to learn how to write, you know, so those are my reflections. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Any other reflections? Member Perry.
Thank you, thank you. So Summer, you mentioned the Pride Festival a couple of times there. You know, I was certainly there this, this year. I'm there every year. A lot of us are allies. We go out, we support Akron and support, you know, we talk about equity and those kind of things. That's a true sign of being, you know, equitable minded for sure. So I want to give a shout out. APS had a booth there as well. I think the teacher worked at Finley, I believe. I didn't get her name. It escapes me, but, but she was there. Erin? Ms. Erin? Okay. Yeah, she was there. I spoke to her and I want to give my shout out to her because she was, you know, handing out information and, and the booth was there. So APS was certainly proud that day.
Thank you. Any other reflections? Dr. Molnar.
I'll try to keep it brief because I also wanted to talk about the backpack event and pride, but I don't want to belabor it because we mentioned it a lot. But the backpack event really was beautiful. I was so excited to be there. As a parent, also, as my children were going through the backpack event, somebody asked me, so how well attended was it? And I said, the line to the Otter Slide made it all the way to the stairs. So anyone who has spent time at the Akron Zoo knows it's a full house when there's a line for the Otter Slide. Additionally, the pride event, just a beautiful demonstration of support, I marched with our staff members, handed out stickers. And as Member Perry said, it's really great to see the equity focus of our district really in action and recognize the way our district supports our staff, the district supports our students. And in addition to our staff booths and in addition to our staff marching, Firestone Theater also had their own booth and Firestone Theater also had a group of students marching. And also I want to recognize that in the children's area where there were tons of freebies and games and a lot of events, a lot of our teachers were the volunteers working in that area also. So our community came together in so many ways. Our district was present in so many areas of the event. And parents were coming up, both at the backpack event and at the pride event, coming up and just really happy and pleased. And that's what we really like to hear. The only thing, the question I kept getting was about the supply lists as we're heading into open houses. I know some schools have started already, but parents are looking for supply lists and some trouble logging into Home Access Center. I know if we don't have Chromebooks this year at home, then it's harder to log into Home Access Center sometimes. So some things to keep in mind that I heard. But I was able to access my supply list even without knowing my teacher for each of my children because I went to their grade level at, on our APS website and my kids go to Resnick. So I went to the Resnick site and then they had by grade level. Even if I don't know the teacher and even if I'm not logged into Home Access Center, I could find out the supply list. So looking forward to open houses. And also, since I have nineteen seconds left, I can say today was the first day back to school for the University of Akron. And so I saw our early college students today who, today wasn't their first day back, but their first day of Akron, University of Akron classes, all over the Polsky Building and having a successful first day of school.
Thank you. Any other reflections? Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, since the last time we met, I had the pleasure of attending a fair, a Young Entrepreneurship Fair of sorts at the Northside Market with Project Grad students from Bookto Middle. It was wonderful. The creativity of the students was amazing. Virginique Whitmore, who was the instructor who was there with the students, I saw Ms. Jackie Silas Butler. And it was just really great because our students had quality products from bracelets to nice handmade with the cricket gift cards. I bought greeting cards. I just purchased them all because they were really nice. And I told the kids, I don't purchase things being nice. I purchase quality. And so I'm glad to see young people producing quality. So they're doing a great job. So shout out to Ms. Whitmore, who's over at Bookto, Project Grad, and what they're doing in the area of entrepreneurship with our young people. Also, this Sunday, I had the pleasure to attend the Community Love Bash at Joy Park. And I love how we're talking about, you know, the district support and things like that. They were giving away book bags. This is in our East Cluster at Joy Park. I didn't see a lot of APS people there, but maybe they came after I was there, nor did I see an APS table, but there were other schools and charter schools that had tables. So I think when we think about the East Cluster, as was already pointed out, the less investment in the East, that the, the human capital investment of making sure that we're present at events in the East Cluster and connecting with our community in East Akron is absolutely important and a part of that equity piece too, because some of our kids were there. We had a good turnout of children. But like I said, I went there in the early part of the day. So if others were there, then, you know, they can speak about that another time, but I didn't see a strong representation of APS there and I would have liked to see that. Additionally, I did have the pleasure of attending a training at the Cuyahoga Valley National Park in our Metro Park areas. And I was very excited to learn that they are in partnership with us with STEM High School as well as Firestone, that they're doing some things with them about some of the areas around. I was looking as if I saw Marcy. I'm very excited about that. And I also inquire, what about Bookto? Because I know around the Bookto Cluster, we have a lot of empty fields. And she was very excited, the young lady that I spoke to, to say, yes, we're looking to collaborate with APS in as many ways as possible to get students outside to learn about growing and just the things in their environment that's near them. Because we know transportation is very expensive. So it would be great, areas that students can walk that are like blighted areas or fields that we can do something and cultivate that. So I was very excited to hear about our current partnerships and looking to expand partnerships like Bookto Cluster, maybe East Cluster. We know North is already doing some things there in that area. So that was great to, to hear about. And lastly, I met some young men, some young boys that will be starting middle school at Ennis, going into the Six Gray and some boys that attend Miki Bright. And they were around my house, actually on the corner of Arlington and Tripley, and they were selling water. In other cities, they are known as Water Boys, right? And so I told them, hey, get off the streets. Stop having your, your feet in the street. Give me a second. I'm gonna go back and get you a chair. But the reason I bring that up, because they were very, they listened. They didn't know me. And I just said, hey, you shouldn't be in the street like that, selling. Get over here and do, and they listen. So again, I'm so glad that we're leveraging our fourth E, which is entrepreneurship, and I'm looking to tap into that even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other reflections? Okay. So I'll just end by stating that since we last met, I had the opportunity to attend the Akron Council PTA Board Meeting. So their leadership came together trying to organize and prepare for this upcoming school year. And I just want to give a shout out to those people who just work so hard on being engaged and keeping parents engaged. They informed me that Akron Public Schools currently has nineteen PTAs. So we do have some work to do in that area, but I am happy to announce that Akron will be hosting a regional PTA training that's provided by the state PTA. And Akron will be hosting that and it'll be on October the 5th. And so I just want to encourage anyone listening, any teachers, staff, if you have that parent that is just very energetic, encourage them to attend this, maybe even sponsor a few folks to come and learn how to be a PTA, because we know schools that have PTAs tend to have a lot more success just because you have folks advocating for both teachers and students. And PTAs can just do those things sometimes that, that maybe teachers can't do. I don't know if I should be saying that, but sometimes you just need that extra support and PTAs are good at doing that. So Saturday, October the 5th, I believe it's going to be in this building from eight to four. Send out some representation if you have any interested folks to start a PTA at your school. And then lastly, this morning, I had the opportunity to attend the convocation, which is the welcome back to the staff of APS. And I just want to give a shout out to the committee who put it all together. It was very inspirational. We were able to hear from students, from alumni. We had some distinguished guests in the audience such as the mayor. I know the executive county office was represented as well as some of our partners. And I want to thank them for their support. But it was just really uplifting. Gilby was there. Thank you, Gilby. You know, it's just really nice to see our teachers and our staff to come back excited for our students. Because when they're excited, then our students are excited. So again, I go back to that PTA thing because I know sometimes that excitement is hard to keep up as the year begins to unfold. They need all the support that they can get and they certainly do deserve it. So that will conclude my report at this time.
Madam President. Madam President.
Yes.
Quick question. And maybe it's for superintendent whomever. You know, to find some type of resources or some type of grant funding to pay for our dues for PTA to probably get more parents involved? Because every school has a fee. It's between eight dollars and ten dollars. And it pays for the state and then other things. And I don't know if that's sometimes hindering parents from being a part of the PTA, but if we can find some grant money or some partners or something could help, maybe help offset some of those fees, maybe more parents would get engaged. Just a thought.
So one thing I'll just share around that topic. I know when I was a PTA leader, that was just a line item in our budget. Now, we don't turn away volunteers. So you don't have to pay the volunteer, but to be an actual member, of course, those dues help support the work of the PTA. But we always had a line item. Sometimes it was under the president's discretionary fund, but whatever you call it, it's there to help support things, those needs that come up like that. So if there are any PTAs out there, you know, that is something that is a legitimate PTA, you know, expense for training and also just for membership. Okay, so moving on, we do have a few requests to address the board. And so the first request is from Mr. Donnie Brooks on the topic of education. And so as Mr. Brooks comes up, I'll find our little blurb here. I don't see it. But you have three minutes, Mr. Brooks. Please refrain from speaking on matters related to vendors' business. Please direct all your comments to the chair. You do have three minutes to share with us. And you may start.
Hello. I would like to share my thoughts on the recent requirement educational level for substitute teachers. I was a substitute teacher for APS and with an associate's degree and nineteen credits away from my bachelor's degree and was released with this new rule that all subs must have a bachelor's degree. I think the target should be acquiring teachers that are able to reach the students in a meaningful way, individuals that look like them and understand and their plights. For example, recently, I was assisting the lead teacher in class and the topic was about Black history. One of the students was asking the Caucasian teacher, when did slavery end? She didn't know the answer. I said eighteen sixty-five. The whole class turned to me. With that being said, we need more teachers, male and female, that can relate to the plight of our students. And I was a sub for a different district. I was the only minority in this district. Even the cafeteria and janitor were Caucasian, but I was a sub. They're not going to hire an, an all-black man for their district in that, on that level, which I understand. But we hire teachers that don't look like our students and they can't understand the plight. They can't understand what these kids are going through. And that should be the focus of how we can reach these kids. Because like I said, I have an associate's degree, nineteen credits away from my bachelor's. That should not defer me from being a teacher or sorry, a substitute teacher in APS. Because just because you have a bachelor's degree, that don't mean that you can teach. There's people that have a bachelor's that had a 2.2 GPA in college, but they got their bachelor's. That don't, that doesn't tell, that doesn't tell anyone that, hey, they can teach because they have a bachelor's degree. So I think the rule should, you know, maybe take a different look at the rule and see, how can we help these kids? How can these kids relate? How can we get to them? Because we're not going to get to a kid in class just because they got a bachelor's degree. You know, I'm not saying everybody should come from a negative situation to get to the children, but you have to understand these kids' plights. In the schools that we have, sixty percent of these kids come from troubled homes, come from single-parent households, come from drug-infested, come from alcohol. And a lot of these teachers don't, haven't came from that plight. So then, like I said before, that's like me coming in class trying to teach about the Holocaust to a bunch of, you know, Jews and Nazis. That doesn't look right. So with that being said, you know, I think the rule should just, you know, be looked at differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Next, we have Danae Pollard, Senior, on the topic of education.
Hi, how are you? I'm great. Does anybody know what this means? Oh, okay. That's, that's good. That's fine. I'm here to talk about the education too, on this element of ether. I don't think, like I said before, our school system is far behind. We're still talking about Christopher Columbus and the basics and that has nothing to do with success in life at all, the history of anything. We're not talking about business. We're not talking about finances. We're not talking about children enhancing their own talents. I see we're starting to possibly getting masonry and stuff back in the schools. We aren't expressing any of those. You know, the United States is a corporation. It's a business according to the Constitution. I don't even think we know our rights. I think, I don't think our children know our basic rights, you know, to voice our freedom, you know, about driver's license, about the court systems, about any of that. I don't think they understand that people are in positions that have been appointed or probably not even qualified for those positions. Anybody who's in this position should be elected by the people, not appointed. Our health system is down. We're going to pharmaceuticals and we're not basically healing off of what God has already put here. I bet I can walk outside and identify probably ten to fifteen plants that'll heal you faster than that, whatever medicine you're taking. I can probably tell you more about cancer. You know, cancer doesn't have to be healed by radiology and all these other things. You know, it can be healed by a frequency, which is a tone, eleven thousand hertz. I don't think our children really know who they are. I think we've only touched the basis of DNA. Does anybody know what DEA is? Probably not. Deoxyethyridic acid, that's what's the DNA inside of DNA. You know, DNA can be repaired. You know, a lot of health conditions are due to DNA passed down from gene to gene, generations after generations. And it's a way to fix that, you know, especially even when it comes to the brain. It's always to fix it and it's done naturally. It doesn't have to be done pharmaceutically. And our children are to start. I don't, I just think it's time for something a little different, maybe to shake something up or try something different. Instead of going with the same old routine, you know, like how your great-grandmother told your grandmother told you. And that's what you stand by or that's what you live on, when it's a whole different scene going on right now. A lot going on behind the scenes that I think a lot of people know and don't say nothing and may even partake in. So maybe we can do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Next, we will have our superintendent's report. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry, Vice President Jackson, board members. Good evening. It is unfortunate that we did have one of our tutors that we lost in death, Ms. Pamela Toppin. She was initially hired to, as a substitute teacher by Akron Public Schools. She became a full-time teacher in nineteen ninety-one and was assigned to developmentally handicapped unit at Pfeiffer Elementary School. She served in a number of teaching assignments at Pfeiffer, first grade, second grade, second, third grade combination, as well as the ESEA reading class. She remained at Pfeiffer School for twenty-five years until she retired in twenty sixteen. Her love for children motivated her to return back to the district in twenty seventeen initially as a substitute teacher. And then she became a tutor at seventeen, initially as a substitute teacher, and then she became a tutor at Cyberling in twenty nineteen. She had thirty-five years of total service to APS. Ms. Toppin was always viewed by her administrators in a most positive manner. She was devoted to her students, and her teaching style was student-centered. She was an effective leader who displayed professional qualities in the classroom and throughout the building. Terms such as awesome, effective, and great were used in her evaluations to describe her teaching style. Former Principal Earl Nay at Pfeiffer wrote in her evaluation, "She is a totally awesome teacher." Principal Ray Neil Jackson may have said it best when she wrote in Pam's year-end evaluation, "Pfeiffer is blessed to have her." The Akron Public Schools wish to extend our condolences to the family. She will definitely be missed. May she rest in peace. National Social Worker Day, August twentieth. AACP, our Akron Association of Classified Personnel, had a welcome for staff and families on Tuesday, August thirteenth. There was a food truck that was there, and certainly I enjoyed the fried okra so much that we actually had a double dose of it. I won't say who else was with me, but it was our chief of staff. Steve Dakin, Director of Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, spoke at the Northeast Ohio ESC on August fifteenth. It was a pleasure to meet him. He was very enlightening, enlightening, and provided a wealth of information to superintendents. Also had an opportunity to attend the Akron Roundtable, where Ms. Valadia Fullwood, author and exhibit creator, giving back a tribute to generations of African-American philanthropists, spoke on the soul of philanthropy, tongue twister, examining power and possible, possibilities of giving back, of Black giving, I'm sorry. We also welcomed back the secretaries to the school opening meeting. Had an opportunity to attend the Village Ball on Saturday, August seventeenth. Attended the backpack at the zoo. I went both days, had an opportunity to meet a lot of our families. This year, we added the school leaders to the process, which our families were able to interact with the principals, and they actually were able to enroll students, and I actually had a chance to meet some of those families that were enrolling their children. And so I want to say thank you to them again for entrusting your child, your most precious commodity, with us. Had the opportunity to attend the Akron Pride Festival on last Saturday. Also want to recognize the ERG, which is our Employee Resource Group. Dr. Merkel sort of leads that, and Ms. Erin Semenette, who sort of kind of spearheaded. But we had teachers and other employees that came and were a part of it, passing out different brochures and different things for our district. So I just want to thank them for taking time and giving up their time on Saturday. Also had an opportunity to attend First Apostolic Church Community Block Party, which was a back-to-school event where many of our scholars attend and were a part of that. We also had convocation today, and I want to say, first of all, my apologies to many of our officials that were there. Didn't have an opportunity to recognize them by name, but I do want to say thank to, thank you to them for attending. State Representative, Ms. Veronica Sims, to our mayor, Mayor Malik, to Ms. Sharon O'Connor from Ward Ten, Ms. Jan Davis, Ward Four, Mr. Phil Montgomery, representing County Executive, Mrs. Eileen Shapiro, and also want to thank Ms. Teresa Carter, we had parents that were there, and just so many others that came and shared. And hopefully I've not missed names, which I'm sure I have. But I just want to thank everyone for coming. Thank the committee again for doing an outstanding, outstanding job this year. And our theme this year is Dream the Impossible Dream. Also, our PTAs, so Ms. Autry, every school is directed that they must have one, so hopefully their parents will have an opportunity to attend. The first day of school is Thursday for the district to come, and kindergarteners will phase in on this Friday. We had some personnel recommendations, so many temporary employees are moving into full-time positions, just so that our community and our board knows that we are definitely moving people back into regular positions as those are coming up. We have an upcoming Talent Fair. Some may know that as a job fair, August thirtieth, from nine to three, here at Ten North Main. There will be onsite interviews for support staff, interpreters, family liaisons, paraprofessionals, which are teacher assistants and also substitute teachers. So that's Friday, August thirtieth, right here at Ten North Main, from nine to three. Also, for Cornerstone Two, just want to brag a little bit that we did, some of our schools did get ten percent, ten-point gains, I'm sorry, that were achieved with Algebra One. So I think, I want to thank our teachers and our school leaders and our central office staff, Dr. Kaver's team, for the work that was done last school year. We know that we have to take it to another level. The ten percent was great, but we want to do even more this year, so we're going to keep striving. This is one of the key strategies under Cornerstone Two relative to Algebra One. And so this year, we're going to be implementing Alex, which is an algebra, electronic intervention tool that is going to help us with, in some of our areas with Algebra One. And I've used Alex before. I think we've also used it here in the past as well. We're going to kind of be spreading that a little bit across our district. And so I am very proud of the work that we have done, and we're moving along very nicely. So, thank you so much. That ends my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. Are there any questions? Thank you, and thank you and your team for your work. Next, we will have our Treasurers' Report. Dr. Thompson.
So I'll try to be brief. The financial report for last month, we went over in pretty great detail at our last Finance Committee meeting. But I think what's important to remember, especially in the front side of our financial reports, first of all, let me back up and say, if you take just the first page and follow that across the top of those three blocks on the first page, you are fairly well-informed of how we stand versus the five-year forecast and versus how we did a year before. So it's, it's very informative. You can do a deep dive as, as you move along. And, but remember, this particular month, our first month of our fiscal year, represents eight percent of the year. So funds don't always come in exactly the same time. They come in at different times, but it's still a very solid report. You'll see one negative number, which we knew was coming. So for example, that was pretty much occurred because we ordered, we were trying to get in book orders a year before. We weren't able to get them in for a variety of reasons that were beyond anyone's control. It was reported to Finance Department, so we knew it was coming, and we shifted those dollars. But that report doesn't exactly explain that very clearly. It would look like there's a two-point-six-million-dollar hole here that, but it, but it's not. We moved that money from the year before over. So less that out of that financial report in, in our first month was outstanding. So I'm happy to report that. If you have any questions at any time and you want to go over it in more detail, please don't hesitate to make an appointment. We can do it on the phone. I can pull it up. We could do it through a Zoom, however is most convenient for you. Or you can do what, I mean, just so many people do, especially out in the community, because it's so riveting, they come to our Finance Committee meetings, and they listen. I mean, I think we had eleven people last time. So, you know, that's, that's double. That's double. And if we can keep doing that, Member Perry, we, yeah, we might have fifty, sixty people someday. I don't know.
One day.
And I do want to give a shout out to Gary Cooley. There was a fundraising event for a foundation called the Critical Flow Foundation, which supports, if you've ever heard of it, the Critical Flow Studios. And a lot of our students go to those, that studio, and it's amazing. They go there for drum lessons, music, any kind of lesson, all kinds of lessons. And then the foundation backfills that. And you probably would never have guessed, you know, our security officer of however many years that Mr. Cooley's worked here, he worked really hard at organizing it, getting it ready, was really an integral part of that, of getting that whole thing to go and raise money. And then at the event, you would have never known that he did. That's just Gary Cooley, if you know Gary Cooley. So I just wanted to give him a, an attaboy for, for doing something to help the arts and to help our kids.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Sorry, Madam.
Are there any questions for Dr. Thompson?
Yes, ma'am.
Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick questions.
Okay.
So in the presentation that you gave.
At the Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I put my notes here. Hold on a second, sorry. Prior to me coming to the board and the negotiations that you guys had did back, what, it was like two years ago, two, three years ago?
Yeah.
The negotiations, how long will APS be paying for all of that?
Forever.
Okay. So is there going to possibly be a new, another levy we're going to ask for after this levy?
Well, the unfortunate part, the way schools are funded, remembering back to the real essence of it, House Bill nine-twenty, freezing revenue, there's, every school district in the state of Ohio will be back on, on average, every four and a half years. We've gone twelve. So APS has done really an outstanding job. And, you know, I think I can speak for Dr. Robinson. Thank you to previous folks that made that happen, and we're working the best we can to continue that and stretch that. But the reality is, every so many years, we'll always be back on the ballot, because that is the funding mechanism to drive, that drives public education in the state of Ohio, and that's beyond our control.
Okay. So then, one more question. So then with negotiations coming up again this year?
Correct.
So is it looking like we'll always be in the red? Because if we're going to be paying forever for the prior negotiations that we did, coming into new negotiations, what is it, like every two, every two to three?
Every three years. We signed three-year contracts, and the reason it's back on top of us so quickly, if you recall, that contract was not signed until almost a year, and they worked about a year and a half without a contract. So that's why it's flipping around so quickly. It feels like we just finished, which we did, and now we're, we'll be preparing for negotiations again this, I don't know if it'll be winter, early spring, somewhere in that timeframe, we'll sit down and start negotiating another, another three-year contract. But it's important to remember, in order to sign a three-year contract, you must be able to certify, without any levies, that you can pay for that pay raise for the next three years. So that'll be.
So how's that looking?
Well, I'm, I am going to remain optimistic that we can balance paying our people what they deserve, and at the same time, being fiscally responsible. So there is a way, there's a way to do this, and I, I believe we can get there.
Point of order, Madam President, because this is contractual discussion. It should not be happening at a board meeting.
Good point.
True. So I'm sorry, I was just trying to ask a question. It kind of, thank you for that.
Yeah.
It kind of like spiraled there, but I was just, far as the negotiations and the presentation, where was that in the presentation?
It's.
Far as like that dollar amount and things like that?
Yeah, it's listed in there, maybe. I can't remember, maybe third page, fourth page. It talks about some of the impacts from pay raises. But pay raises, just, and perhaps that might be a good topic for our next Finance Committee meeting, to look at how, what does a pay raise do, what's all in it, and how does, how does it, because it's a compounding thing. And so, you know, I do recall when I was a teacher, and at one point, there was something about a two percent pay raise, and at one point in my early career, and I thought, well, geez, you know, this just, this is nothing. This isn't, I don't even feel this in my paycheck. And you really didn't. But that two percent is there for the rest of your entire career, compounding itself. It doesn't go away. So that's hard for people to really wrap their head around and truly understand. And of course, it's not two percent for one person, it's two percent for four thousand people. And so it adds up. So, you know, it is a balancing act for sure. But once a pay raise is implemented, unless you negotiate a pay reduction, it is always there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions around our financial report for last month? Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And so now we will entertain a motion to approve the resolution, resolution for the July twenty-twenty-four financial report. Is there a motion?
I move to approve that resolution.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any further discussions? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Okay, got it, got it. Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And next is the President's Report. Briefly, I just wanted to share that it's at this time of the year that we normally reassign clusters, because this is the start of the school year, versus doing it at our organizational meetings in January. So there have been just a few changes that have been made. Because our two newest members have not had a full year with their cluster, they will remain with their cluster. So that would be Member Sykes is with East Cluster, and Summer Hall with the North Cluster. Mr. Perry will be with the Ellett Cluster, Mr. Alexander, Garfield Cluster, Carla Firestone Cluster, and Dr. Molnar, Bookto Cluster. And myself will remain with the Specialty Clusters. And so I encourage you to reach out to Elise for scheduling assistance and visiting those schools when you can, so you can just get a better idea of how the district runs. It's always a good opportunity to see our teachers and staff in action. And so that is actually all that I have. I do just want to say thank you to the many, many community groups and churches. I've seen multiple backpack giveaways, haircuts, hairdos, shoes, everything, clothing, that they offer to our students. And so I just wanted to acknowledge all of those individuals and thank them for their support of our students in this district, and encourage our families to take advantage of that. I think there are several still going on this weekend. And that concludes my report. Next, we will move on to committee reports, legal contracts and board policy. Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. We met last Monday, August nineteenth, and because we had passed everything from before, the month of July break, there was only new business left. But we did have a lot of new business. So we always create our agenda left. But we did have a lot of new business. So, we always create our agenda for the next meeting during our meeting. So we already have a draft agenda ready for our September 16th meeting, which is the next time that we will meet. And at our September 16th meeting, what everyone can expect is a first read of Policy 8660. It's a Neola update, incidental transportation of students by private vehicle. And then in discussion section, that's the only thing we have for a first read in our 916 meeting. In discussion, we'll be discussing House Bill 214 and Senate Bill 29. These are state updates that are required by all districts in Ohio. The first one, 214, is about policy against using statements of commitment or soliciting or acquiring specified individuals to ascribe to specific beliefs. And Senate Bill, I think Administration and Legal is going to lead that discussion. Senate Bill 29 is about state restrictions on data that's collected and stored by districts and vendors, which that, I'm sure, practice-wise, as a district, we're already probably in compliance. We just need a policy on the books to fulfill what we need by the state. But once again, Administration and possibly our Director of Technology is going to give us a couple minutes on that. And then, policy review in our August 10th Board Professional Development. There's a great visual with a clock, and it's about the Board's role in policy review, the systematic evaluation of existing policies. And so we discussed this a bit in our committee meeting. And since we didn't seem to have an articulated, formalized process, we discussed how we'll be working towards that goal, using two policies that were identified within the transition report. And so, and the legal policy committee had not discussed them yet. So, we will move forward on that policy front with nepotism and anonymous complaints. And then, the last discussion item, oh, sorry, I have more notes here. Preliminary assessment, Admin will provide background on the policies and which stakeholders they think should be invited to the next discussion, and also when Admin will think the next discussion will be. So they, they will tell us. Once again, probably not a long discussion, just kind of an update as we work through this Board goal. And then, finally, the last discussion item, I'm tentatively calling Policy 4123. So it's, it's no secret that there have been a lot of questions lately about roles and responsibilities of independent contractors. We hire hundreds of independent contractors every year, multiple departments. So not just one specific department, not just one specific type, but policy guidance and reference towards that. So we discussed in our policy committee meeting, we have Section 3000 for professional staff, Section 4000 for support staff. And each of those sections even has specific roles of volunteers. And so, once again, Admin and Legal will lead the discussion of what we already have for the role, general role of vendors and contractors. And so that way, there is guidance on what that role is for, for all of us and, and how to interact with those. So, long committee meeting. And then finally, tonight, we have Policy 5136 on personal communication devices. Admin and Legal, again, are asking us to suspend the rules for an emergency passage of this policy. And in the public comments section, it says, "In order to have policies that accurately reflect the current state of the law and the operations of the district, the following policy is presented at this meeting for a third and final reading with a request for a waiver and the first and second readings prior to approval." And I will also say that they promised to bring this same policy back to committee once Neola has made recommendations. But because of the state timeline and everything that's happening, we need to get this and then fix it again later. So, with that, I have a motion, do I start, is this where I start, Board Member A? Okay. "For the purposes of preparing for the 2425 school year and pursuant to Bylaw 131 of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education, I move to suspend the operation of Bylaw 131 that requires more than one reading of an amendment or two or an adoption of a policy prior to a Board vote as it relates to the proposed amendment to Policy 5136, Personal Communication Devices. I further move that, should the Board vote to suspend Bylaw 131 for this limited purpose, the suspensions will automatically terminate after this meeting of the Board is adjourned."
Thank you. It has been moved by Dr. Molnar to suspend Bylaw 131 in this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Board Policy 5136, Personal Communication Devices?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Perry. Is there any discussion? I just wanted to acknowledge that Akron Public Schools was already ahead of the game on this matter. And so now that the Governor has made this law, we're just doing our due diligence to, to bring it up to par. I know Neola's going to be coming back with further possible additions to this. But just wanted to acknowledge that APS was already ahead of the game on this. So thank you, APS. Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And thank you for the committee report. Next is Finance and Capital Management. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, President Autry. We had a great meeting last Monday. And one thing I was excited about was we had a very concerned citizen come to us to speak to us about our upcoming levy. Citizen Carla from 44307 gave us some great insight on some of the facts surrounding our upcoming levy. And we've all heard about the twelve years it's been since our last levy. Typically, a school district goes four or five years, so we're more than double that at this point. Not only that, it sounds like we have a lot of very important bigwigs here in Akron who are behind us, who are helping us out with this committee. You know, Suma Health for one, Children's Hospital, Child Guide and Family Solutions is on board. So we've got some good constituency here in Akron trying to help us get this levy passed. There's no issue number yet, but that's coming at some point in September.
Early September, we expected.
So the next couple of weeks or so, I would think. So that's very important, once we get that number to have it out there, what our issue number is
Right.
For that levy. But keep in mind, that levy is going to be going strong this November. And our committee is, is doing good work on that. And we're excited about hearing all the progress and what the next couple of months will bring to us regarding the levy. Our next meeting, September 16th at 4:30. Maybe we'll have more than eleven people at this one.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance and Capital Management Committee? Thank you, Mr. Perry. Next is Instructional Policy and Student Achievement. Vice President Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. We, our next meeting is October 14th. So we have no report since our last meeting was canceled.
Thank you. And lastly, Equity Committee.
Oh, yes.
September, September 3rd. It wasn't on my calendar. That's why I skipped it. September...
September 3rd because Labor Day is on the 2nd.
Okay, September 3rd is our next meeting. Thank you. I need somebody to send that so it's on my calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. No report. Our next meeting is September 3rd as well at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. First, we have the Board Retreat on Saturday, August 10th. Are there any additions or corrections first? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the Board Retreat on Saturday, August 10th, 2024.
So moved.
It's moved by Dr. Molnar. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall?
I'll abstain because I was not there. But also on the notes, never mind, I'll wait for discussion.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Abstain, I was not there as well.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with two abstentions.
Thank you. And next, we have the regular meeting minutes from Monday, August 12th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes as presented.
I move to approve those minutes.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
I'll abstain also.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will have our Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of Personnel Recommendations presented, presented in categories 10 through 20. But I wanted to make a note in 10.3 that the teaching position is, is a replacement. It is not new. It is a, one teacher exited, the next teacher is replacing. So it is a replacement, not a new position.
Thank you for that. Is there a motion to accept the Personnel Recommendations?
I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion on Personnel Recommendations? Mr. Perry?
One comment, one question. Superintendent, the new teacher you're talking about where it says in Energy and Environment Protection, is that the one that's replacement?
Yes.
Okay, they're all replacements, not new?
Yes.
Okay, got it. The second thing is in 10.4, once again, we come to these meetings every time, and I point out that we were reinstating teachers that we let go earlier. There's six more teachers here that are coming back to work. And I want to point that out again, and want to thank the Administration for making sure they kept their word about doing this. And there's six more on tonight's agenda. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Vice President Jackson?
I think before the vote is called, the motion is to, with the corrections made, the second should be with, approved with the corrections of the new to replacement for the record, so that the record properly reflects the business that took place.
Yes. So the motion would be with the correction on item 10.3.
10.3.
To read new, or replacement.
Replace.
It reads replacement.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Personnel? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Sorry, is this roll call on the...
This is the, this is approval of the Personnel Recommendations with correction on 10.3, which should read replacement.
I didn't know if you were still doing separate with correction. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes, abstain on 12.1.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh, or excuse me, five oh, or five oh with one abstention on 12.1, and then six oh on the balance.
Thank you. Next, we will have approval of resolutions and motions under the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 25. They are in present, proper format, and I move for their approval, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Abstain on 27.3. Abstain on 27.3, yes, on the rest.
27.3?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention on 27.3, six oh on the balance.
Thank you. Next, we will have our Business Affairs Recommendations. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 27, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our Business Affairs Recommendations? So moved. It's been moved by Dr. Molnar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion on Business Affairs? Mr. Perry?
I'm curious about 27.5, the Canal Place lease agreement. I noticed that we're extending that, and we're paying a pretty good monthly fee, I think it is, for that. What is that for?
So, that's where we have some things that we're housing and with moving, movement of the, of the, from the schools, that we needed additional time to house those items that eventually will be going where they should.
Okay.
But temporarily, we had to extend it. But I can have Ms. Debra to come and give more detail.
Thank you, Madam President. So 27.3 is on the Business Affairs Agenda, where I needed to abstain from. 27.3 is under Business Affairs. And I was looking at my agenda, and I ran, I spoke too soon, so, thank you.
Actually, that is correct. We needed space because we no longer have as many buildings. So in order to allow the redistricting to take place, we initially did the approval to rent 10,000 square feet during the summer, with some other plans that are coming and the fact that you still have Firestone Park and some other buildings that we now need to address now that the redistricting has almost finished. The timing is kind of funky because it stops in April, and some of these other things will go on before. And we do not want to have any issues with security or safety for the items that we're housing. Once you turn off heat, do not have water, et cetera, the items do not keep in good condition to be either relocated, reused, or at, at the final determination to be auctioned. So we wanted to realign it as other decisions are made for the 2425 school year.
Okay. Do we foresee it'll go past the April 26 deadline? Or is that too early to tell right now?
I would tell you it's too early to tell right now, because the other things that you will see coming forward, obviously, is the construction for the new building at the Chemor location, which will involve Pfeiffer and the Miller South, three locations of students and those buildings as well. So, we're doing it as a nutritious fiscal time period, and I won't tell you that it won't come forward again. It is a good, well-secured space. It's very easy for our buildings and ground staff to go in and repurpose the items in and out easily as they move to the various items that need to go. And we truly moved nine buildings this summer using that location. And kudos to the team. They got everything where they needed it to go. And we owe them a great debt, but part of that is the organization that took place at this location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion around Business Affairs? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry? Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Abstain.
With the abstention of 27.3, yes, on the balance. Thank you.
You got it.
To my colleague here.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention on 27.3, six oh on the balance.
Thank you. And so I've been asked by our parliamentarian, just for clarity's sake, that we repeat our vote on the consent agenda, just so it's clear for the record. So we will reentertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I, I move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion?
Erasure.
Seeing none, roll call please.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. And so the next item on our agenda is unfinished business. I do not believe we have any. There is no new business. There is currently not a need to recess into executive session at this time. And so the only organizational items I need to report is our next board meeting is on September the 9th, 2024. And so with that being said, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
I'm just giddy. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 6:37. Thank you. Have a good evening.